Also taken over the general obligation bond duties. That at a minimum, we record their meetings and we put them on YouTube to be viewed later. That's basically what the resolution says. That's all I have.
Is there any comments, discussions from the council? Madam City Clerk, we do get in here late. This is a citizen requested item. If anybody would like to speak before the city council, anybody sign for that? Hearing none, we'll consider this closed and we'll move on to presentation. FIFA World Cup Advisory Committee Policy Updates. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. I am going to ask Samantha Morris. I know it's not the start of the new fiscal year yet, but I'm still going to introduce her as the Director of Community and Emergency Services and ask her to come forward and tee up this topic for us.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Sam Morris, as well as the staff liaison to the FIFA group. Wanted to give you guys a quick roadmap and reminder, we have 352 days until the official kickoff of FIFA. Our FIFA committee has been hard at work for the last several months, meeting multiple times a month. And we're going to hear from two out of the three subcommittees this evening. The first one is going to be Rebecca Gannon. She's going to give a brief update from our communications group. We're going to introduce you to our logo that we are proceeding with, as well as policy recommendations from the Chair and former mayor, Eileen Weir. So I will hand it over to Rebecca.
Hello, council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. As you can see, we've got our PowerPoint presentation up here. So here it is, Brand Style Guide. Trail to the Trophy is the theme that we have chosen for the FIFA presentation and for our branding overall. So as you can see, we've got Trail to the Trophy. We have a wagon wheel in the background. We've got our soccer ball right there, and then you can see Trail to the Trophy right there. It's got, it's a scarf. As you guys probably know, it is part of the international soccer culture. The wagon wheel itself, framing the soccer ball, represents the focus on soccer, but also tying it into our independence history. Trail to the Trophy, three trails, you guys kind of see where this is going here. You've got the scarf there with some textured fringe, and it's got some text moving to the side, kind of emphasizing movement. And then the name, of course, is the font is stylized, reminiscent of the Western topography, because we're thinking about this on an international stage. A lot of people recognize President Truman worldwide, but what's seeped into the culture of the international stage is the Wild West of America. So if you talk to anyone who comes from overseas, a lot of times they think about the Cowboys, they think about that. We really want to lean into that and talk about the trails and what we have historically there. You can see our rationale right here. We've got a flag, the City of Independence flag, has the wagon wheel on it. We've got our covered wagon tours, again leaning into that. And then even the National Historic Trails has the same coloring that we have. So you kind of get an idea of where we're going and why we're going this direction. Our logo variations include a logo mark with the city and year underneath. You can see there on your left. And then on the right, Trail to Trophy is just the word mark with the city and year. Again, different ways to use this logo and use this branding. So whether it's going to be on a T-shirt, whether it's going to be on a banner, whether it's going to be on paperwork or something like that, we've got variations of it here. Let's talk about the FIFA 2026 official branding. As you can see, it's vibrant, is one good way to use those words. What we are going, as you can see, the tournament is black and white logo with the gold trophy right there in the center. Each host city has its own color scheme and corresponding logo. You can kind of see some of them there on the bottom. This is the FIFA 2026 Kansas City specific. It's using a vibrant crimson color as its primary color. It's got that vivid sapphire blue, it's got a darker indigo, a lighter teal. These are all used throughout this. Now, Kansas City utilizes these various shades of blue in their official city branding. They also have it in their local sports teams, so you can understand where they got their branding from. We are doing a very conscientious choice in not using FIFA colors. We don't want to get in trouble. We don't want to say, oh, this might be a FIFA cover. We don't want to get in any sort of way, we don't want to touch that mess. So we are here giving our own colors. Still, you can see they're very reminiscent of what our colors are, but they are a lot more warm, energetic, adventurous, lively, nostalgic, all the things that you want to be as a welcoming city for anyone who's coming from an international location, coming to the Independence area. We want to be able to utilize that and show them, this is what we've got. It is a deviation from city colors, because we do want to separate ourselves. The other thing I want you guys to know is that this is all ADA compliant. So not only are we separating ourselves from the Kansas City branding itself, because we are independents, we are a different city, but we are also making sure that we are ADA compliant and being welcoming to all types across the area here. So color contrast compliant with white or black, dark brown, which is included in the color palette. And as you can see, the bottom line of colors there are the City of Independence colors. They're a little more muted, which is something that you want when you want to project stability. And that's what our current, you know, branding for our city is. But the colors for the FIFA are on top, the primary and secondary colors of the top two rows there. Those are a little bolder, a little brighter, a little more energetic. Again, that emotion that we're trying to show. Here, as you can see, is some of it in action, so to speak. Here's the T-shirts that it could be on. There's some examples of what maybe our volunteers would be wearing, or someone who was somehow participating in this, maybe they want to buy a T-shirt from us. By all means, we will sell it to you. And then here's some of the banners that might be on our street poles. Again, separate from the City of Independence, but still something that denotes who we are and where we are going. And there it is in summary. Do I have any questions?
Any questions from the council? Sorry, Councilwoman McCandless, I forget you're up there.
Thank you very much. Rebecca, just for clarity for people who are watching, can you remind them how strongly FIFA feels about control of their logo, colors, and brand?
For the people watching at home, FIFA feels very strongly about their colors and branding, which is another reason that we are trying very hard not to step on any of theirs. Again, this is something that we have actively chosen. Lydia from my team spent a lot of time looking at various shades, Hughes, making sure that we still were in line with what we want to convey as the City of Independence. We also want to make sure that we are still capitalizing on the idea of FIFA and that energy and that happiness. But we do not want to step on any FIFA toes, as the case may be.
Because it comes with substantial fines. So there's risk to the city if we do so, but thank you very much.
Anything else from you guys?
Any other questions?
I shall turn it over to Eileen Weir.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to shut this unless you want to keep looking at it. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. I'm Eileen Weir. I am the Chair of the Independence FIFA World Cup Committee. My co-chair Carlos Cabrera is here. Cindy Rogers from our committee is here. And we are here tonight to present to you our first batch of public policy recommendations in anticipation of this great event that's coming to our region and to our city. As we've reported before, the Public Policy Committee consists of myself, J.J. Koontz, Michael Young, and Zach Harmon-McLaughlin, who I think you know each and every one of those individuals and their volunteer efforts in our city. The purpose of the Public Policy Committee is to provide recommendations to you and organize our community events during the 2026 World Cup. Our committee in particular is analyzing, developing, and recommending positions and strategies on legislative and regulatory matters. Our objective is to enable and advocate for policies that can be changed temporarily, or in some cases, you may determine to make those permanent, to help businesses capitalize on the increased customer traffic and exposure that we expect during the World Cup. We have identified seven sections of the city code to review. We're also considering ways in which we can optimize operational readiness in our businesses and provide a high level of customer and fan experience to ensure safety and security during this wonderful global event. I'm going to start first by talking about our, what we are calling our assumed best practices. And I know you have this in your packet, so I'm not going to read it to you word for word. But we understand we cannot possibly cover everything that's in the city code and ordinances. So these have been developed and will be publicized and distributed throughout the city with your, pending your approval, to create a fan-friendly atmosphere. So just for the benefit of the public who is watching or is here, I'm just going to briefly describe these assumed best practices. This was developed by Zach Harmon-McLaughlin. It was brought forward to our Public Policy Committee meeting for approval, and then it was brought forward to our Steering Committee for approval and has been approved to bring forward to you. These are really just general expectations of people while they are here, whether they're residents, businesses, visitors, guests. The first one is just general expectations, to respect local culture and community, to operate in good faith, and as always, public safety comes first. The second set of recommendations are about temporary permitting and compliance, and I'm going to get into this in more detail when we get into our specific recommendations. But just to let the community know, visitors, businesses, residents, that permits still apply. Everything that we are recommending will still require people to have a permit, that inspections will happen, and that people should be prepared for random pop-up inspections by city officials, even during off-hours, and that zoning norms apply, that no operations should disrupt residential zones, even temporarily unless clearly permitted under event allowances. The next section deals with noise, signage, and aesthetic expectations. We know that the population of our region will nearly double during these events, but there's still a respect for your neighbors that will be expected. This section deals specifically with noise restrictions. Amplified sound must remain within reasonable limits, particularly near residential areas. Sinage should be temporary and respectful in terms of businesses and other pop-up events that may be happening, that they can't interfere with our operation of our city, no offensive language or imagery, and maintaining clean and attractive spaces regardless of any ordinance suspensions that the council might approve. Vendors are expected to maintain neat and professional-looking booths, stalls, and buildings. The next part deals with waste sanitation and environmental care. I think we understand what this means, that waste must be managed, gray water and hazardous material must be disposed of properly, and any portable units, portable toilets must be managed and monitored. The fifth is housing and short-term rental and hospitality standards. We're going to get into this in much greater detail this evening, but even if you are not renting your home, if you're just having guests in your home, that overcrowding needs to be monitored, noise and conduct and parking rules still apply. Section six is transportation, delivery, and event coordination. This deals with traffic flow must be maintained, shuttle services and pop-up transportation, if that is made available in our city, must be registered and coordinated with public safety, and pedestrian flow cannot be impeded. So we want to ensure that as events are happening, that walkways and ADA paths must be clear at all times, and other pedestrian accommodations must be considered. These are kind of the, you know, rules you learned in kindergarten section, I call it, the community relations and customer service. Be a good neighbor. Customer complaints are handled promptly. And we are also including, local hiring is encouraged, understanding that people may need to staff up during this period of time, and we would encourage them to look into our local community when they need some assistance with that. The next, emergency protocols, is just an expectation that people know the city's emergency response plan, and that all staff, whether it's temporary staff or your permanent employees in your businesses, are trained in our emergency protocols. The final section is dealing with penalties for noncompliance. This, without going into a lot of detail, gives the city, you know, the full force of our laws and code of ordinances to enforce those things, including immediate removal to shut down operations for violations, future event bans, and public disclosure of noncompliant vendors may be made public to protect residents and visitors, which we always do in our health inspections and other publications of the city. So that's really just an overview, and as I said, you have that in your packet, and you can look at that in more detail. But we are asking the city to come forward at a future meeting with action to formally adopt these, so then we can make them available to the public as the event draws closer and closer. So moving on from that, we are, as I said, we are, have identified seven sections of the city code that we are reviewing. We aren't coming forward tonight with recommendations on every single one of those sections. This is just the first batch, but you'll understand it's plenty for you to consider, and we anticipate that there will be more. Just to recap, the group stage matches will be taking place June 16th, 20th, 25th, and 27th in Kansas City. The round of 32 will be on July 3rd. The quarterfinals will be on July 11th. Those will all take place at Arrowhead Stadium. The semifinals will be July 14th in Dallas and July 15th in Atlanta, and then the final match will be on July 16th in the New York, New Jersey area. So we are recommending that the temporary FIFA policy period run from June 1st, 2026, through August 17th, 2026. Visitors are anticipated to stay an average of nine days, and many people will likely extend their stays throughout the summer months, whether they're traveling from someplace around, you know, around the country, or they're coming from another part of the world, it's anticipated that they may be here well before and well after the matches. So we are asking the council to set the dates as June 1st, 2026, until repealed by the city council on or after August 17th, 2026. I say that specifically, we are recommending that this be the period of time, but the council will need to take action to repeal any temporary measures that they choose to make, because you may find out that some of these are pretty good and you might want to keep them. So we are asking that you require yourself to take the action to repeal these at your August 17th meeting. Okay, so the first area that we're going to talk about is mobile food units and temporary food vendors. Just for purposes of brevity and clarity, I'm probably just going to say food trucks. We understand that that extends beyond food trucks. These can be other temporary food vendors, but I'll probably use the term food trucks quite a bit. We consulted on these with Christina Heinand, your Health Director, and Danielle Dupree, who runs our Innovation Center. About 80% of their clients at the Innovation Center are somehow food-related clients, so she has a lot of expertise in this area of operating mobile food units. Okay, so number one, we are recommending that you amend the zoning to temporary allowed food courts with shared utilities for mobile vendors. The idea of this is that we have been discussing on our committee that it might be a nice opportunity to create some spaces around the city where we can have food truck events. We've identified several different areas that we think would be appropriate for that. That would not necessarily mean they're running the entire length of the time that World Cup is happening, but we may want to organize some food truck festivals, and they may be for multiple days. So this is consideration to amend your zoning to a temporary allow for those. The second is streamline business licensing and permitting to create a simplified FIFA vendor application. The Innovation Center is well-equipped and willing to help you with this, to develop workshops for FIFA vendors and host events for one-stop applications and processing. People may choose that they want to operate here in Independence during World Cup. They may not want to operate here on a full-time basis, so we would like to engage the innovation, recommend to you that you engage the Innovation Center and help develop this, so people can come and get their training, do their application, and be out the door. The third is develop permitting and licensing fee structures for temporary vendors. We don't think it's really fair and equitable to our businesses who have gone to this process to obtain a license that other people shouldn't have to pay for it. So the current fee structure is $325 for a health permit and $750 for commissary and food truck licensing. We aren't making a recommendation on what we feel that fee should be. We think that that's something that you would be, well, more prepared to determine what you think would be an appropriate fee for that. That would still allow people to be able to afford to come and operate during that period of time, but we do believe that people should be required to pay that fee. Number four is allow for temporary regional shared permitting. As we know, we live in a little bit of a complicated health department world in Independence, having our own health department, Jackson County having a health department, and Kansas City having a health department. So currently, if you want, if you're a food truck vendor and you want to operate in all of those areas, you need to have a permit for each one of them. So we are recommending that during this temporary period, or until you repeal it, that vendors who are permitted through Jackson County or Kansas City Health Department can operate in Independence. We are recommending that for this temporary FIFA policy period, that they require to pay a fee of $150. And then if they want to stay here beyond that, then that's for you all to decide. Number five, expand the temporary permitting period. This would allow us to extend this to 90 consecutive days of operation, including sales of intoxicating liquor by the drink, and expand food types permitted during temporary operations. This will also require pre-approved menu safety plans, which we already require, but this just allows for that temporary period to be a longer duration than what the code currently provides for. Number six, and this is where we could use some community help, is amend daily commissary requirements. I didn't really know what a commissary was, so I learned this is mostly for dishwashing and storage. You have to be able to go back to a place at the end of the day and wash your dishes and store your product. It's a very, very busy time at the Innovation Center. People are there all night, coming back to meet that requirement, and it's absolutely mandatory one and an appropriate one, to get their dishes, you know, just get their time to get in there and do, get their dishes washed. So we are, again, recommending that you collaborate with the Innovation Center in accessing commissary resources. The Innovation Center is willing to develop a low-fee temporary membership to those who want to obtain a temporary license, so you don't have to pay your usual, you know, fee to belong to the Innovation Center that they would allow for a temporary license. We are also looking for other facilities in the city that may be made available for this purpose. So if anybody has access to facilities that have large commercial kitchen spaces with cold storage and dishwashing facilities that could be made available for this, that would be extraordinarily helpful to take some of the pressure off of the Innovation Center.
Ms. Weir?
Yes.
Interrupt.
Yes.
Do you need cold storage, which means?
Refrigeration.
And frozen space, too? Freezer space, possibly?
That, I don't know. That would be, probably we would need to look at what they're selling. I mean, yes, if they're selling ice cream, yes, they need freezer space. But typically, it's refrigeration, and then, you know, critical is the dishwashing.
Sure.
Operations. Number seven is waive residential storage restrictions. Right now, we do not allow people to store their food trucks at home, and we're asking that during the temporary FIFA policy period, that we would allow that in accordance with the city code requirements of vehicle storage. So there's, you know, very specific language in the code about where you can park a vehicle, and what condition it must be in, and how often it moves, and the surface that it needs to be on, and all of those things. We're not asking for those to be waived, but we are asking that those vendors who are licensed and permitted and insured are able to store those vehicles at their home. So that concludes our recommendations on the food trucks, and I will try to answer any questions before we move on to our next section, which is short-term rentals. So I'll just pause for a moment.
Anybody have any questions? As we were going through the possibilities for your commissary, a bunch of names were coming to my mind. Definitely have to check to see what availability and resources, but this may be a good way to supplement some income and help out the community, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, that would be very helpful. The Innovation Center can do it, but they're going to be running 24 hours a day, and it'll be, you know, people will be waiting in line to be able to get in, and we anticipate that may happen, so. And we could just use more in general, so.
In that regard, I was just thinking that, you know, schools are not in session during that time, maybe.
Yeah.
You know, some schools might be available, or certainly churches might have some available.
Yeah, we thought about that as well, so we'll keep working on it. Okay, moving on to short-term rental. This has been a topic that has been discussed a lot across our region, and I'm sure other regions who are host cities. It's one that we spend a lot of time looking at, and we believe that we've come up with some really good recommendations. We've looked at a couple other cities who have already adopted ordinances regarding short-term rentals. Specifically, Liberty just recently passed an ordinance for some temporary changes to their ordinances for the World Cup. And, well, this has been a tough one to tackle for the region, because every city does it differently and has different policies and requirements. And ours are a little bit different than Liberty, but it was a good template for us to look at, and we did, were able to take some recommendations from that. The first one is allow additional rental property types. Right now, we are restricted to units that are, nobody is living in them permanently. What we are recommending, and again, this is, we've seen this in other cities, recommendations that they are making, is during this temporary period to allow individual bedrooms in the principal building of the property, sharing common entrance, kitchen facilities, and living areas with the present or non-present residents. So this would allow somebody to rent a room in their home, whether they're living there or not living there. The second additional rental property type would be completed areas of the principal dwelling. So if you have a finished basement with a way in and out, that's critical. A upstairs space, a garage, apartment above your garage, that those would be allowed during the temporary period. And detached accessory dwelling units, ADUs, providing that the ADU meets all other life safety requirements. So those are all things that are not currently permitted, and we are recommending that you allow those to be permitted during this temporary period. Number two, suspend restriction. Number two, suspend restriction on number and proximity of short-term rentals. Right now, the requirement is that there shall be no short-term rental within 500 feet of another short-term rental. We're asking that you suspend that, and also to allow for an unlimited number of units per block face in residential districts. I think it's currently four? I don't, that might not be right, but we're asking just to eliminate that restriction. We are asking that if, where applicable, if there's a homeowners' association, that that be considered as a relevant factor in whether to deny the use of a specific property for a short-term rental. We're aware that some homeowners' associations are saying, you're not allowed to rent, you're, we're not going to allow any short-term rentals, or we're not going to allow any additional short-term rentals. There will be an application process for this, and we're asking you just to take that into consideration when granting those. Number three, require compliance with Good Neighbor Guidelines. And I'm not going to read all the way through this. This is on the city website as part of the rental ready, short-term rental policy and requirements. It's very similar to what we just went through on the assumed best practices. A couple of things that I will, it's generally just be respectful of the people around you. But, you know, there's, we're asking that none of those be waived, and that, in fact, we strengthen that a little bit and make sure that these are well-publicized. It's already required that they be posted in a conspicuous place with inside the unit, but we feel like this is something that we could actually bring more attention to. Short-term rental application and fee. We, again, in the sense of being fair and equitable to our businesses who have already gone through the process of obtaining a short-term rental application, that we don't feel like people who want it temporarily should get it for free. Some cities are doing that, and we are not, that is not our recommendation. So, we are recommending that the applications be submitted to community development by May 1st of 2026, and their application fee of $500. And a little different than how you operate, do it now in the city of Independence, we are recommending for expediency that the community development director, or his or her designee, will have the approval authority, provided the application meets all the requirements. So, this would prevent people from having to go to the Planning Commission and then to the City Council to get a temporary permit, and they will pay $500. I think the fee now is $350, so it's a little bit more, but we think it's, that's fair to ask. Number five deals with the transient guest tax. This is not different than what we currently require, that all temporary short-term rentals will be required to remit transient guest tax at 6.5%, and it's for you all to figure out how you're going to get that, but we're not asking that to be waived. Number six deals with certification. Again, this isn't really different than what you do now, is that they, in order to have a red, short-term rental, that you will need to be certified, which includes maintaining liability insurance, not less than $1 million, or conducting each transaction through a platform. So, we know what all those are, VRBO, Airbnb, all of those things. Again, we feel it's fair to ask for a fee for this, so the fee for rental re-inspection will, we are recommending that be $60 for a temporary permit. Those are the recommendations we're bringing forward tonight, to ask you to consider these and bring them forward on a future council agenda in the not-too-distant future, and make your changes and adopt what you choose to adopt, so that we can start getting the word out about how these functions are going to operate in our city and during what period of time. Other things that we have looked at that I just want to share with you, hotel-motel ordinance, we've reviewed it, and we're not recommending any changes. We feel like it's, it's good. Our hotels mostly have their own internal policies, that's, they're not going to change them for World Cup anyway, and we think that we've worked as a community really hard on making sure that we have a very strong and effective hotel-motel ordinance, and we don't want to, we don't see any need to make any changes. Camping in public parks, this has been discussed. We think it's a bad idea. We don't think that we can provide the level of safety and sanitation that would be necessary to allow for camping in public parks, so we're not making any recommendations to changes for that. No cause evictions. This is, I know, an area of great concern to FIFA. It is certainly to us, to our region. We just haven't had a chance to really delve into this yet. This doesn't really, in fact, or involve the city of Independence. This is something that is handled by Jackson County Circuit Court, so we, you know, this is something that we will continue to dig into and discuss with the court and see if there's any action that the City Council needs to take, and if so, we will bring forward a recommendation. The last item that we have on our list, and we may be adding to this list, but as of now, is the sale and consumption of intoxicating beverages. This involves multiple ordinances, so we will be meeting with IPD to go through the multitude of ordinances around sale and consumption of intoxicating beverages, and we anticipate that that will be brought forward as well, including hours of operation and other things that affect businesses that sell intoxicating beverages. So, that concludes our list of recommendations, and I'm happy answering any questions.
Any questions, comments with the council?
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes.
I guess my only concern on the short-term rental recommendations is staffing. I guess this may be a question for the city manager, if we've thought about how we're going to handle that.
To date, we have not, but these recommendations are extremely helpful, and I would tell you that as we work with the committee on formulating those ordinances for your consideration, certainly, as is always the case, implementation of said ordinances will be a priority concern. But, you know, typically, our approach is to figure out the best public policy and then figure out our implementation strategy from there. So, certainly, needs to be vetted, but to be determined.
I, because I also think short-term rentals have to be inspected by the fire department, too, so that'll have to, we'll have to work through that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Councilman.
Actually, a question for the city attorney. How are, like, temporary ordinances changed, how are they done?
Well, it's, as we've been discussing, you can either do it for, you know, a set period of time, or you can do it for, I mean, in the end, all the ordinances are obviously subject to change by you all, so they can either be done for a set period of time, or they can be done until you all take action to undo it.
I guess my question is, do we have to vote on them individually, or is it just like one thing we vote on once, or?
It would probably be, work best to do it individually.
Okay.
Because otherwise, I mean, there could be some that, some of you, you know, you could be okay with doing one, but not the other. So, I think it would, it could get kind of messy if we tried to do it all in one big ordinance, like I said, unless everybody was just all in favor, which maybe you are. But I would probably do it, you know, based on the, you know, you know, you could lump them together, so based on chapter or something like that, but you wouldn't want, I don't, I think we'd probably break them up at least, so.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
So, Councilman, if I could, each one of these relates to a specific, you know, a specific section in the code of ordinances. So, you can, I mean, our intent is for you to be able to look at each one of these individually, relate it back to that particular article, number in the code, and say, do we want to make these temporary changes? And so, it was certainly our expectation that they would, each one of these things would be taken individually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, well, more of a comment. Thank you for all the work the committee has done and the subcommittees. As you can tell, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of complexities on trying to make this safe and successful. So, I give my, my question is for you, Mr. City Manager. Working with the committee, is there a timeframe that we can start discussing this more in depth with our one-on-one conversations with you? Certainly, as a council as a whole, what it's going to look like with some of these ordinance changes and temporary permits?
Now, I'm going to tell you, my recommendation is going to be for staff to move expeditiously to get these ordinances drafted. I think that's important for several reasons, not the least of which is to be able to communicate with the individuals that this is going to impact. So, whether you're a homeowner who's interested in renting your home, a business owner who's looking to feature your business and take full advantage of the opportunities that are going to be here, the longer runway we give ourselves to communicate that to the impacted parties, I think that's just better customer service. I also frankly would like to see Independence on the front end of leading in the region on making some of these changes. The mayor, former mayor Weir referenced some of the, you know, changes that a few municipalities brought forward relative to short-term rentals, but to my knowledge, some of these more comprehensive changes haven't been fully adopted by other municipalities, and I think if we can be seen as a thought leader on this, that's to our advantage. So, for those reasons, I think it's important for us to be bringing these forward for your consideration as soon as possible.
I would agree, and of course, you know, this always comes down to funding and money and grants and what the state and Mr. Barzai, I'll probably tap your knowledge to that a little bit when you come up here, but whatever we can do to help encourage the, our elected friends at Jefferson City in Washington to help with those conversations, please let us know.
Yep, I would agree. We need to continue to advocate for our community, which I think we've done an excellent job of that thus far, but continuing to differentiate ourselves from the larger city of Kansas City, who of course is the host to some of the, you know, more high-profile events, but that does not mean, and in fact, you've heard in the presentation tonight, the large impact, the large influx of visitors we're going to see, it's going to have tremendous opportunity, but tremendous impact on us, and we want to make sure that's an opportunity and not a burden.
Agreed. Ms. Weir, thank you for all the work you're doing. This brings us to the annual legislative report from John Barzai and Associates. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, let me begin by introducing from our staff, Mr. John Mayfield. He handles our legislative portfolio on your behalf, day-to-day throughout the session. I'll let him, ask him to give some opening introductory remarks, and then I know he'll ask our representatives from John Barzai and Associates to come forward.
Thanks, Zach. Keep my remarks short and sweet. There were about 2,600 bills that were proposed this year, 67 made it to the finish line. I track about 50 to 75 bills every year. Went to Jefferson City three or four times, helped testify on bills and provide support to our wonderful lobbying team, John Barzai and Chris Ropie are here, so I'm going to turn over to them.
Good evening, Mr. Protam and members of the council. It's our great privilege, and thank you for that privilege to represent, pardon me, something happened to my voice today. I'm not sure if it's out. If anybody had it, I would love some. Oh, thank you. I apologize for my voices. Okay, oh, thank you, much better. Thank you again for the privilege of representing your city in Jefferson City. It is a great, it's a great honor for all of us with Barzai and Associates, and Mr. Chris Ropie, who interacts on a daily basis with Mr. Mayfield and with Zach. Will come here and discuss some of the highlights that we worked on for you. I did want to mention, as John mentioned, it was a fairly active legislative session, which we haven't been used to in Jefferson City the last few years. We've had a very active House of Representatives and a Senate that seemed to bog themselves down with inter-chamber personal difficulties that stopped everything from happening. Regardless of what political party you're in, it wasn't very pretty, and it probably cost a lot of good legislation and a good programs from being adopted by the state. It was a productive session. We immediately made, 17th had ended, we, the governor immediately called us back, called legislature back in the session to deal with the disaster relief, the amateur sports tax credit, which is very, very important to all the cities and counties in the state of Missouri for attracting events, which was going to sunset in August, and it's been a great, great program for bringing economic development and amateur events to our state. And of course, the Chiefs and Royals. So, that was certainly top priority, the stadium funding for the governor, and at the direction of the city of Independence, we testified in favor of that during the special session. It did pass, and I guess people a lot smarter than I will figure out what's going to happen next, but I guess from what I read in newspapers, we should know something by June 30th with regards to if somebody's leaving or not, and so, we certainly hope not. It was very interesting, and much more articulate individuals than me that just spoke before me about the FIFA, and thank you, that was really, I'd never, with all the things we talk about in FIFA in Jefferson City, it has never crossed my mind, the local governing bodies in this close proximity to the facility, and with all of the people coming, would have to tackle the hundreds of issues that you're going to have to tackle. I just, it never dawned on me, so it was very interesting to hear that process. On your behalf, I think we have some great relationships going in Jefferson City with the House members from Independence, the senator from Independence, a lot of new players are there, and I'm very happy to report to you that, while a lot of bills and some of mine didn't get passed, I think overall, people brought it down a notch and communicated it in a civil manner, even though they had disagreed politically on things. There wasn't name-calling and things of that nature. As you all know, elections have consequences, and the party in power is going to try to push their agenda through whether we like it or not. And so, and some of that occurred at the end and caused for some hard feelings between the Republicans and Democrats in the Senate. All in all, I think Mr. Mayfield mentioned there's about 67 bills passed this year. As a result of a lot of the collaboration and cooperation, we saw probably a record number of large bills that contain numerous subject matters, but under one topic of political subdivisions, insurance, healthcare, and some of those carried 10, 15, even 20 different pieces of legislation that did not make it on their own, but were incorporated into that. I think most of you are aware from our final report, the budget which was passed, about a $52.7 billion budget, must be signed by June 30th. The governor does have line item veto in this state, and so he's currently probably looking through what he will veto or not veto, and the fiscal year begins July 1st. For all substantive bills that were passed this legislative session, Governor Kehoe has until July 14th to sign or veto, or just let them become law, and for those bills that do not carry an effective date, August 28th of this year is the effective date of any new laws. Mr. Protam, if you, with your permission, I'd like to have Mr. Ropie talk about a couple of things, and then make ourselves both available for any questions?
Please, sounds great.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you again to echo John's comments. We really are honored and privileged to get to represent you all and be your eyes and ears in the Capitol every day to represent your interests. I'm just going to go through a few items here, try to cover all the big-ticket issues for specifically city governments around the state and here with you all. A lot of positive things happened, starting with the stadium issue getting at least resolved, where Missouri's in the game to try to keep the teams, and what that means for the Chiefs at the current location, just right next door, and whatever happens with the Royals, but that was real big to get that done. Some budget items of interest, the drop-in center got $1 million this year to continue that work, which I know is important to several of you on the council and working with. and working with your folks kind of on the private side, so to speak, here in Independence, to get that money and had a lot of great support. Senator Nicola was great to help fight for that. Our House delegation was great to help get that included in the budget as well. I know something for Representative Steinmeier, the ARCH program, which he was able to get a million dollars put in the budget for that item, which he was able to help get through the Senate and get that to the governor's desk to see what he'll do with that, with that funding. I know I've had conversations with the department about how they might implement that. And they're really, like John and I visited about it. They're waiting to make sure the governor signs it and approves it first. And then they're going to try to look at what you all are currently doing with it and if they just contract out with you to continue that, or they may have something else in mind. But we will, we will stay on top of that and try to make sure that happens in a way that's going to allow you to provide those services that the way that you would want to. Then the other big budget item is two and a half million dollars for the Truman Library to continue promoting the Presidential Library here. And then that got in the budget as well. Some proactive issues that we worked on, that we were able to successfully get done, is to update your transient guest tax, where you can now go back to your voters, something we've worked on the past two years. When you go forward with your new community center, whenever that happens, and if your voters or however you all will do that locally, you will now be able to take the funds from your hotel motel, the transient guest tax, and use that if you choose towards the operation of the community center. So you'll be able to have some funding to be able to do that if that's what you all decide to go forward with as a city. Jackson County will now have an elected assessor, which they were the last one in the state to not have that. And I know there's a lot of property tax issues in this part of the world. So that will be changing as well. Senate Bill 71 is a bill that we worked on very hard on your behalf for our first responder community and to be able to help them and their family members get free tuition. In the state of Missouri, they go to a community college and got the funding and the budget will be there to take care of that. But something for our first responder community that I know was very important to folks here in Independence. Now, some bills that were very bad, that we were able to help stop from going forward, that I want to just kind of go off a list here of a few of them. Sales tax exemption on food. I think for all of the entities, I think for the city, it would have been about a four and a half million dollar budget hit if that would have passed. And then for the rest of some of the political entities who live off and provide their services off those funds, was about $11 million of what that would have cost for services throughout your community that would have had to been cut or come up with somewhere else. But that legislation did not make it across the finish line. House Bill 660 was a bill that would prohibit from putting something back to the voters for a political subdivision. So if something failed, you would have to wait a certain period of time before you could go back. And if you ever had an emergency situation, obviously, things would change. Voters' appetites for things would change. And so you want to make sure you preserve that opportunity. And all of the municipalities around the state fought that very hard and were successfully able to stop that. Other bills that we always get involved in are on utility issues and trying to tell you all what to do. And from some of the utilities perspective, to force certain things and what those policies look like. Again, a very unified front and one of the best victories that municipalities have had in a while, stopping that legislation from passing for it to only apply. The compromise at the end of the day was that it would only apply to MODOT properties essentially, where they would have that forced relocation. So it would not apply to municipalities. But we were front and center helping with that and getting that stopped. Another bill that we testified and got a bill prevented from going forward in the Missouri Senate out of committee is House Bill 1316, which you all have your residential rental registration or database, whatever you choose to call that. Because of an issue in a very small town down in the boot heel, they were trying to prohibit cities from doing that, which I know you all, that's good information to have, that's good for your residents to be able to know and for you all to know and have that information. But we're able to stop that eventually from going forward from some of our friends in the Missouri Senate. And then the last bill that I'll mention on this side of things was the animal confiscation bill, which would have required law enforcement to go get involved in those types of issues, which I know for you all here, it's with your animal services department or division. And I know some changes are happening on that front. But that's the more appropriate place in a large municipality like yours to deal with those. So your law enforcement isn't being taken off the street to deal with those types of issues. But that's an issue that gets pushed every year that we have to beat back. And thankfully, we're able to successfully do that another year. Well, I lied, one more bill. There was some drone legislation that law enforcement from around the state was very opposed to, which would have prohibited you from using, and from your law enforcement, from using your current equipment that you have and that you've paid for and required you to purchase a specific type of equipment and would have obviously been millions of dollars to all local governments, especially ones of your size, probably even more money than that. And it's really a public safety issue. And I know you can talk to your law enforcement and how many lives are saved and officers are saved by being able to use that drone technology. So that was a big one to keep from moving forward after the committee hearing that occurred on that bill. Three bills that we worked on hard to try to get passed, the appetite just wasn't there at the end of the day for a host of reasons for the legislature to move forward was an increase in the film tax credit. Obviously recently with the Hallmark Chiefs movie and other things in your community that you have to provide, could take advantage of that. It's a very popular program, so the cap has been reached. And so folks in the legislature, rightfully so, want to increase that. But the appetite for, things get spun and, oh, we're going to give money to Hollywood and have them come in. It just wasn't the right storm to get that done. But that'll be something we'll be pushing again in the future. One of my favorite topics to continue to fight for, for you all, is your failure to appear, where you have the ability for folks who just ignore law enforcement and show up for court when they have traffic offenses. And it made it further this year than it has in the past several years. Got it voted out of committee and will build off that going into the future. But that's a great tool that you want to have for law enforcement in your community. And then the last one, which I know is important for businesses as well as your families in your community that deal with the childcare tax credit and trying to find a way to be able, that's the number one thing that we always hear businesses say that their employers need so that people can show up for work. There were several deals in place at the end of the day to try to get that done. But it, things kind of fell apart in the last hours of the Senate functioning this year, where that just did not make it across the finish line. But it'll be pushed again and we'll get it right up to that point and hope for a better result next year. I will be quiet now and happy to talk about any other bills that I didn't mention or answer any questions that you all have, and John can do the same.
Chris, one thing, Mr. Protem, just to add on to what Chris said. The first responder scholarship program is not limited to community, is not limited to community colleges. You can also go to public four years. Just wanted to add that in there.
Any questions for Mr. Mayfield, Mr. Ropie, or Mr. Barzey, while we have them? Well, thank you. I have just, maybe just a couple comments, really. Mr. Barzey, as we're working through the FIFA stuff, we're more than happy on our bi-weekly call to maybe give you some information so you can have your ear to the ground at Jeff City, so you can kind of hear what the conversations are having. As you can see, the complications here are a lot. For us, working through this is the easy part, I think. At least I say that, Mr. City Manager. The funding mechanism to be able to pay the overtime that we're going to have with our fire department, police department, health department, you name it, that's going to be where we're going to be struggling the most. And we had a legislative group go to Washington DC that really promoted that and explained that to our legislators there. And I think they're beginning to understand the gravity of that.
Can I, just something that I'm familiar with. I think we've seen the legislature be very supportive of FIFA and the World Cup coming to this region. I do think, and John and I have talked about this quite a bit, there will be an opportunity and we will work with Senator Nicola and our House delegation next year of some of the money that has been appropriated for that type of services and all the overtime you're going to have from your first responder community, to see if we can try to get the legislature to support giving some of those funds over to you all to have those costs covered, because you're going to have to do it one way or the other, being right next door. You know you're going to see that. And see if we can get that started very early in the process and before session even gets going for 2026. And try to see if we can get some of those funds secured specifically for you all out of what's been appropriated in the past that hasn't been spent yet because it hasn't started.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. Anything will help. Fortunately for us, as in past, we have a great assembly team down there, regardless of party. They work for what is best for Independence, and I really appreciate that. I've had the opportunity to talk to almost all of them since the last election when I put them in place. So, I mean, they're doing great and they're working well together, so we're very fortunate.
They are.
Any other questions, comments? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Last presentation, sales tax and geobond communications strategy. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. As the council knows, back in April, the community gave their approval to a $55 million general obligation bond issue for infrastructure. We also, of course, are fortunate to have had the community's support for a number of sales tax initiatives to support our departments and their missions as well. So tonight, what we want to do is share with you through our Public Information Office, a work that is being done and planned to ensure the community is being kept informed in a meaningful and frequent way about how these funds are being planned to be spent, how they are spent, so that we can further solidify our relationship with the voters of this community, that they're getting those assurances that they rightfully expect that those funds are being spent appropriately and in a way that's adding to the quality of life in the community. So our Public Information Officer, Rebecca Gannon, is here to share with you more about what their strategy looks like for that.
Councilwoman McCandless, I have to say, I forgot to call upon you the last two sessions. So please raise your hand or give a yell out if you have any questions up there.
I will, thank you. Excellent, okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. I hope you guys can see this.
We cannot.
I would be happy to talk you through it. The only problem is it's a very visual presentation. So unfortunately, we're going to have to wait just a couple of seconds here. But what we're talking about, as the city manager mentioned, is that we are really trying to show you guys this campaign that we're going to get going on tax transparency. So with the geobond having gone through, with the sales taxes, from a public information standpoint, we recognize that a lot of people had a lot of questions. And so with that, we're going to try and address that as the best we can through email, social media, campaigns, signing, all sorts of things. So hopefully, we can get this going for you guys so you can see it better. In the meantime, go ahead and drink some water.
Well, just fill this time, Mr. City Manager. I did have some discussion that I was wanting to bring up after the presentation. So since we got a little moment to do a little soft shoe dance here. So as we're working through a whole bunch of... As, as we're working through a whole bunch of complicated issues and different discussion points, we did have the general obligation bond that was put on the ballot April 8th. One of the three did pass, so we have two still out there and some other conversations. So my thought was to present to the city manager and some ideas to the city council as well. Perhaps have a work session sometime in July, as we can coordinate calendars through your office to our executive assistant, Kim, to work with our calendars. So we can put on maybe a half a day to look at what are the possibilities of putting question one back on, question three back on, community center. And I would even go so far as to have in the conversation, do we want to have a committee similar to what we did with our geobond committee for a community slash rec center conversation? So we can have good community input conversation regarding that? So we can, I see you're up and ready. Keep those thoughts in your mind. We can further conversation here or we can wait until after the presentation for further comment? Counsel?
Yes to which?
Wait.
I think yes to both of those things.
Great.
I'm for it, and especially getting together in July for half a day.
Ms. Gannon, you're up. We'll finish our conversation when you're done.
My apologies for that, but thank you for understanding. So this is our tax transparency campaign, connecting the dots, making it easier for everyone to understand what we're doing. The purpose, as I mentioned, brand consistency, engagement, transparency, and ultimately trust, because that's really what we're trying to build with our citizens. And the best way to do that is through transparency, through engagement, and keeping the brand consistent. We're going to do that with visual projects, positive framing, multiple benefits, and highlighting those, creative engagement, visual storytelling where that, it can be pictures, it can be videos. And again, we're just trying to build that transparency and accessibility. Because as you all very well know from hearing constituents, there's a lot of confusion out there. We often get hammered for tax assessments. That's not us at all. But as you guys know, we get hit for those things all the time. We get hit about the gas tax for our roads. Again, not for the City of Independence. So it's just making sure that people understand where we're coming from and what their tax dollars are supporting. So here's a campaign overview. As you can see, we've got an image there with a truck on the street. We've got a little hard hat with the Independence logo on it. We've got a smiling face of one of our city employees. And then we have, for example only, what it would look like for the geobond image right there. So as you can see, it's an example-only altered photo. We hardly ever, ever do that. If we do any sort of editing, it's just color enhancement. We aren't putting trees in randomly, we aren't using AI for any of that stuff. But we did for this one, which is why we are demarking that as such. So for the sales tax campaign, and this is for just the general sales taxes, public safety taxes, general sales tax, all sorts of things, Prop P, things of that nature, we're going to label that as your tax dollars at work. Specifically for the geobond campaign, we're going to be using the phrase "bond built." And "bond built" will probably be used in the captions of photos. It will be used in hashtags when we put them on Twitter or X or somewhere on Instagram, things of that nature. But your tax dollars at work is kind of the blanket overview one. If we're talking geobonds specifics, it is the first time in the history of the city that we've ever passed a geobond, we're going to be using the "bond built" branding. Again, here's the images that demarcate both of them. Sales tax, hard hat with the City of Independence logo on there. And then geobond tax, as you guys can see, the bond branding that we've had for a year now that you guys are probably intimately familiar with, having dealt with a lot of that. So here's some of the elements. We're going to be doing road signs. So when you drive by something on I-70 and you see bridge repairs done because of your tax dollars at work, MODOT kind of thing, we're taking that and we're going to be doing something similar. City of Independence tax dollars at work, culvert repairs. And you can see this is just a general sales tax kind of idea. And that's why you've got the hard hat with the Independence logo on there itself. And then we say specifically funded by street improvement sales tax or public safety sales tax or something of that nature. There in the middle of the center image there, we've got just what it would look like for social media. Again, if you look in the bottom corner of that image, where the slide kind of leads you out to, then you're going to see the hard hat just kind of as a little watermark there, again denoting that this is just your general sales tax dollars at use. And then we've got the website and what it kind of will look like. Website sales tax specifically, we're showing you what we have now, some static pages that we are building out. My team has been building this out for weeks now and we continue to do so as part of our website optimization project. We're going to have Tax 101 for residents, we're going to have sales tax breakdowns, and we're going to have capital project pages. In the future, we hope to utilize our tech services acumen, because they are quite good at this stuff. And we have more interactive elements. And here are some examples of other cities that have done them. We've got the City of Topeka and the City of Jacksonville, Florida, possibly? It's definitely next to a big body of water. But we're going to use that with our ArcGIS, which is a software that we have already been using for various things. That way you can zoom in, you can see what the plan is, you can see where your neighborhood is going to be impacted by these. Then specifically for our geobond, similar, but again, different branding, because it is a specific tax that we have, has historic motion to it. So because of that, we're going to try and break that out and show people separately what it is. In this case, it's going to be a road sign, "bridge repairs funded by the 2025 geobond." That way citizens know where this money came from and what it's going towards. There again, you've got an image on social media. And in the corner, instead of a hard hat, you have the geobond branding. And then we've also got our website. And as you can see, what we have now, what we're going to be building, again, geobond, and then specific municipal services project pages, and then our interactive elements, which could include a dashboard that breaks down what the money's going... down what the money is going towards and kind of have like a monthly tracker, and it could also be that ARC GIS map, again, showing people where the projects are in perspective to their neighborhood. And this will all be housed on our City of Independence website. We'll also have a social media campaign, so progress reports with monthly summaries, a construction start time, and then our completed projects, because as much as you want to talk about what we started, we also need to show the finished product. That's something that's really important, that everyone wants to have. We're going to have project overview, and then we might even break it down to fact versus and fiction. There's a video with a really cute music here. Unfortunately, you can't hear the music, but it's great, and this is just one of the ideas that we will have playing on our social media accounts, is that we can put these kind of videos together, we can put them on reels, we can have them on YouTube, and that way they can be shared throughout. And again, it's just another way to break the algorithm, cheat the algorithm, or whatever you want to call it, and then also make sure that people are seeing this. The algorithm shows us that video does relatively well, smiling faces do best. If we can integrate both of those together, hopefully, we can get the message out to our residents. So what's next? Social media, the website. We continue to build out our newsletters some more, the road signs, as we've mentioned, and just bringing it up in city meetings like this, and making sure that people are aware that there is always a progress report, there's always something coming. We want to make sure that the public is aware that their tax dollars are being utilized appropriately, and they are funding things that are important to them. And I am here for any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments?
So Rebecca, you've talked a lot about social media, websites, things. What are we going to do for our folks that don't do technology very well?
So part of that is things like the road signs, that big green thing over there will be a road sign, so whenever they drive by that, they'll have the constant reminder of that. I think there's also just going to have to be more of these kind of meetings, there's also going to be a lot of, unfortunately, maybe messaging on your part when you talk to your constituents. Hopefully, our messaging makes it easier for you to do your messaging, whether it's the message we give to you and just carry it out there, or maybe it's your constituents when they're sitting at Tim's Pizza, or maybe when they are shopping on the square and they see these things and they hear these conversations going. But even just as simple as a sign makes a big difference. I mean, 30 years ago, we didn't have social media, we barely had the internet, and we still managed to get the word out. We have local media that we can always, you know, do our best to try and work with and coordinate. There's ways that we can do this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just, I think you're hitting the nail on the head with the transparency and trust and all that, I mean, that's exactly what we need to do, and so appreciate your work on this and looking forward to seeing the results.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation, excited to get the projects going and get the signs up. Back in '97, '98, when we did pass the street sales tax, we did put up signs, big old orange signs that said, "Your tax dollars at work," is what we did. That was before we had these darn things, which life was way more simpler back then, and that was very well received, for sure. So thank you. If no one else had any questions, maybe we can continue on a little bit of the conversation that we were having while we were waiting for the technology to come about. So conversation at hand, just to restart, to have a council work session sometime in the middle to end of July. We have a lot of different things in the hopper, historic sites, do we do parks, how do we formulate the questions, the conversations, what order? We have city charter stuff to work on, we have IPL governance model, hopefully by then we should have some working, well, maybe not by then, but we'll have some better understanding of what flow to put these in order. So just a lot of busy work to take place. So if there's no objection, I'll have your office work with our office to communicate some good calendar times to get this set up.
All that sounds real good to me. I guess I just, one question relative for the City Manager, probably, I know you're doing some work relative to looking at alternatives for, you know, different parts of geo bond or things of that nature. Will that be ready, you think, by that timeframe, or?
Yes, I think we can have meaningful information ready for the council for your consideration for those different aspects of the geo bond, and obviously, if there's more information you need, we can pull that together, but I think we'll be substantively far enough along that your conversation will be worthwhile.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just threw out the end of July, 1st of August works best. I mean, that's definitely flexible, depending on the time that you need to get the info going.
I would probably, based on what I heard at your roundtable discussion last Monday, if there is even a possibility of wanting to bring any issues forward for consideration at the November election, I think the sooner the better. Let me be very clear for those that maybe didn't catch that. Your conversation last Monday was about governance of Independence Power and Light, and potentially bringing charter amendments forward relative to how that is functioned and overseen. If that is still of interest, and I know you're having your study session on the 14th to maybe contemplate your final changes, et cetera, but I think we would be wise to have that sooner than later based on election deadlines for giving notice to the Board of Elections that you intend to call for an issue.
Agreed. Okay, so that will, that will work. Just one more, just in the hopper, the next three years is going to be pretty busy with election cycles and stuff like that, and as we talked about at the end of the last council meeting about our public safety for our police department comes up in December of 2028. That last time did not have a sunshine clause removed from it, so it does conclude in December of '28, unless that is re-upped. So that is something that we have got to discuss, about taking care of that.
That is right. We've got renewal of that issue to consider, and then, as you've appropriately put, sir, any of the aspects of the bond questions that didn't pass that you may want to come up, as well as, you know, we mentioned to you several years ago that you have a billion dollars of deferred maintenance, and while we're certainly happy with where we've started, $55 million is a relatively small percent of $1 billion in deferred maintenance, and then, of course, you know, three of those four charter questions were defeated by less than 125 votes on average. So a lot of different issues that the council could contemplate bringing forward, and I think I would recommend and agree with you that it would be time well spent to lay all of these out and decide priorities and when to bring, if, when and if to bring any of those forward for additional consideration.
Correct. Anything else? Well, hearing none, I will conclude this City Council study session adjourned.